Good evening, I'd like to call the regular board meeting for the Ansonia Board of Aldermen for March 12th to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Rich, can we get a roll call?
Aldermen and women, King.
Here.
Tarar.
Here.
Adamowski.
Here.
Tar.
Here.
Cassetti.
Here.
Genetti.
Here.
Knott.
Here.
Hardy. Yaman.
Here.
Rivers.
Here.
Mamon.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Lovinski.
Here.
Aramti.
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
All right, I declare a quorum. We have one set of minutes to consider the last meeting, February 13th. The pub, we had the public hearing and the regular meeting same night.
Motion to approve. Go ahead, Rivers.
I got you, Tonya. I'm second.
Motion by Mamon and second by Rivers to approve all.
Both sets, Josh.
Yeah, both sets, all in favor?
Yep.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries.
Josh, you're gonna, do not interrupt, are you gonna do the special meeting minutes as well?
He did them, we did them together.
Okay.
Oh, twenty oh, oh.
Twenty seventh is the special meeting, not the regular.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure that's clarified.
Did we do roll call yet?
Yes.
Okay, well, this is Alderman Hardy, sorry, I just tried.
We got you. Did everyone look at the twenty seventh as well? Or we could, we could do those next month if.
The, the, the one for the UI, Josh?
Yeah, that's the, that's the special from the twenty seventh.
Yeah, we had, we had the hearing on the ordinances and then the, and then our regular meeting on February 13th. That's what we approved.
Motion, motion to, motion to approve the special minutes from the, was it twenty seventh, the, the meeting that pertains to the UI easement?
Yes, it was the twenty seventh.
Twenty seven, okay. Thanks, Josh.
Yep.
No second on that?
Yeah, I'll second, Josh.
Okay, motion by Mamon, second by Yaman, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining? All right, motion carries, thanks. Sorry, I forgot those. Public session, we'll open up the public session, just a reminder. Anyone is welcome to speak, please introduce yourself and your location for the public record and try to limit yourself to three minutes or preferably less. Anyone from the public who wishes to address the board tonight?
Uh. Dan got his hand up.
Dan has his hand up, you're an Alderman, do you want to speak in public session?
Uh, yes, I just had a one comment, an idea. When we do the pledge every month, it sometimes doesn't sound like we need somebody to lead it. Why don't we invite members of the public or one, you know, a, a student from our school system to lead us in the pledge at each meeting? That way we all start off on the right foot, everyone does it together. Just an idea, I mean, we can invite whoever wants to do it. I mean, we're doing Zoom meetings, so it would be easy for anyone to sign on and lead us in the pledge, just an idea.
All right, thank you. We can bring that up with superintendent later as well, if he thinks. Okay, anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? And last call, third and final call, anyone from the public? Seeing none, we'll close the public session and we'll open public official session, starting with Mayor Cassetti.
Good evening, President Stewart, members of the Board of Aldermen, residents of the great city of Ansonia. First, I want to thank Rich DeCarlo and the Cultural Commission for the lovely event we had this past Saturday. Even if you weren't Irish, you certainly felt like it was, you were with the beautiful music and step dancers. I want to wish everyone a happy and healthy St. Patrick's Day, and I hope you enjoy a traditional corned beef and cabbage meal at one of the many restaurants in our downtown Ansonia. Speaking of downtown Ansonia, test pits are being dug today and all week at Olson Drive to determine whether the soil needs to be removed or can be reused. November 2024 is, the date is still where we are at for the completion of the new sports complex. I'm sure you are anxious, as I am, to see the construction underway. Sheila will update you on the Riverwalk plans and the State Street expansion plans a little bit later. We have finally received the go-ahead from the state to begin test borings for future pad sites at SHW, and HUD has given us the go-ahead to begin the access road at 35 North Main Street. The retaining wall adjacent to North Main Street will need to be shored up. It's hard to believe that another splash pad season is right around the corner, and I'm sure everyone is anxiously awaiting its reopening. Joe, Chicago, go easy on the Easter holiday dinner. The Easter Bunny will be handing out candy again this year, stay tuned for the date and time. I know that Jeannie Rosinowski, our animal control officer, is having a fundraiser to be held on March 23rd at the lobby of the Ansonia Police Station, more details to come. This year's Rock the Valley promises, promises to be bigger and better than ever than last year's event. Of course, we are in the middle of budget season, and we always want to place the lowest possible burden on our taxpayers. As you know, we are here to represent all of the residents of Ansonia, not just a few. We have to be open to creative ways to run government, efficiencies and regionalization. All of these things help to sustain a very tiny city. We want to be able to maintain an affordable and attractive community. I know our finance, tax and accessories office are doing their very best to ensure that every resident is taken into account. I know this board supports our efforts to stabilize the budget, and I know you will make the best decisions in the interest of the residents going forward. I will leave you with this old Irish proverb that is fitting for budget season. May your heart be light and happy, may your smile be big and wild, and may your pockets always have a coin or two inside. Thank you and God bless you all.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, we'll go to Corporation Council, John Marini.
Mr. President, members of the board. Good evening. I want to start off by congratulating Chief Williams and the Ansonia Police Department on the arrests that were just announced relative to the copper and brass Liberty Street fire. So these are the arrests in connection with the arson that was committed at that property. Per the press release, I wanted to thank our Ansonia PD, our Ansonia Fire Marshal, the Connecticut State Police Fire and Explosive Investigation Unit, and particularly Officers Barry, Officer Joshua Rodriguez and Detective Kristen Hunt for all their work, along with, of course, the detectives and the officers for bringing these suspects to justice. Obviously, this was quite an incident for us, putting the life of our residents in danger in this, in this residential area, and of course, also the lives of our volunteers, our firefighters and emergency personnel, who of course had to work to ensure that there was no one in that building and that no harm came to the neighborhood. So it's a big thanks to, to everyone involved making that happen. And I also want to give a big thanks to this board, of course, and to the residents of Ansonia for allowing us to move forward with the foreclosure on Ansonia Copper and Brass, to take this entire parcel into the city's ownership, to not only secure it from, to ensure events like this do not continue to happen, but also to bring that property back to productive use for the good of our residents, to bring jobs, tax revenue back to the city and to restore Ansonia back to where it belongs. Good news, March 18th, that's the date of the hearing, where we anticipate the property will finally be cleared to transfer from its current owners to the city of Ansonia. So mark that date on your calendar, March 18th, the end is now in sight. Again, thank you to the police, thank you to this board for moving us forward, both with the fire and with the conclusion now to, to our copper and brass saga. Bright things in the future for the restoration of productivity on that site. Also want to point out on the agenda, we have charter revision, a formal resolution before you tonight, and that puts the, the wheels in motion for the rest of the process. The next step after the written resolution is passed is the mayor will appoint names to the Charter Revision Commission, and it would, they, that law follow the deadline set forth in state statute. Beyond that, there's the UI easement, we had a special meeting on that earlier, and right now there's a recommendation to go ahead and to pass that agreement with one stipulation that I would like noted in the motion, which is that we will be providing UI with a schedule of activities, of events, our community events, our recreation and sporting events on the site to ensure that the work does not disrupt the activities of the city of Ansonia, our kids, and anything else going on in that area. So just that one caveat with that approval. We'll be talking about High Axiom and the lease of, potential lease of some of that copper and brass site, SHW, to be particular. So this is the property that we already own, we're going to be talking about that in executive session. And finally, I just want to put another word of thanks out to another great city employee, Jeannie Rosinowski, our animal control officer, said a lot of great things about her in the past, and I know we were recognizing her at the last meeting. Just want to say I had an opportunity to work with her recently, and really, you know, very specific instance where you see Jeannie stepping up in a very difficult situation with an animal, where I think most animal control officers would have been content to move forward with an order to, to destroy the animal, but she was willing to, to really put the work in to ensure a solution that allowed that animal to, to, to move forward and, and to survive and to be in conditions whereby the animal could thrive and be safe. And just another day on the job for Jeannie, but you know, bears recognition that she does put that extra work in, and that work really does make a difference in the lives of the animals of our city, and it's an encouraging thing to see that passion every, with every case. That's it for my update, but we have a lot to discuss tonight on the agenda.
Thank you. Any questions for Attorney Marini from the Aldermen? All right, you got off the hook early, but we'll be back to you. And next up, we'll go to Economic Development Director, Sheila O'Malley.
Thank you, President Stewart, members of the Board of Aldermen and residents of the great city of Ansonia. So good news and good news, good news is that I, I believe you saw on Facebook our post about home a pump, which, you know, is a small but significant expansion at their manufacturing site for additional employees and office space. Also munch eatery is bumping out in the back with a outdoor patio and excess space for catering. So that's all good news, and the mayor met recently with Staney Dairy, and they too have, are finding that they're running out of space. So that's all very good news. The, the difficult, the difficulty is trying to find, you know, space, suitable space for manufacturers that, that need expansion space right away. As the mayor and John mentioned, 35 North Main, we are moving forward with the access road and two site pads. We have bids due back tomorrow on the sale and or lease of property on that site. So be interesting to see what we get for bids. There have been several inquiries, so I know we've got the interest there. We already know we have a manufacturer who's interested, and of course, fuel cell. See Franklin Street, I think Chicago and Joe had inquired about that project. That project is going to be complete on May 31st, they're looking at May 31st, I should say, that's not written in stone. It should be complete with, I, I think, I believe they're going to do a section of sidewalks, I don't know how far that stretches, but again, we've talked about lots of money for that street and putting in a pre-application, which we are going to be doing to try to complete the entire street, needs it desperately. State Street, the expansion of the State Street project has the scope nearly doubled, not due to what the city had asked for, but what reviewers on the state and regional level had added to the program. The lines are going to be checked in the upcoming next couple of weeks, and a surveyor was out there for the retaining wall, which is getting, is going to be designed and constructed. Hopefully, you know, fingers crossed, this year we're going to see construction out there. Feel like a broken record about Franklin Street. Yeah, that's it, just trying to create new space for all the interests that we have in Ansonia, and, and part of that interest is due in part to the stabilization of the budget and the taxes, and the fact that it's a relatively safe, small city, and it's affordable, so appreciate everyone's efforts towards that end, helps my, me do my job a lot easier. I think that's it, if there's any questions, I'm thrilled to answer them.
Questions from the Aldermen for Sheila tonight?
Sheila, you're probably aware there were several kind of false fake posts on Facebook this week regarding the Big Y site and the determination for it. Wonder if you could just clarify factually the status of, of that?
Yep, that's a, that's a very good question, and I would tell you that that's not an accurate, that was not an accurate post. The owner is in talks with several future potential tenants, those are not two of them. And in fact, they are also talking to someone who I just recently referred to them, who is looking for space, so. Yeah, thank you for the question, that, that was not an accurate post.
Thanks, thanks for clarifying.
All right.
Other questions from the Aldermen? All right, you got off easy, too.
I did.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Moving on, we'll go to Police Chief Wayne Williams. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening, President Stewart, Board of Aldermen, sent attorney Marini stole most of my report regarding the fire, I guess I will make it light tonight. Just so you know, personnel wise, we are still, I know I come to the meeting every time and ask if anybody knows anybody, send them to me. We have six open officer positions, we are doing some testing. Now, we, we had oral boards last week and the week before. So we have some candidates, we did fill our dispatcher position, and she is working out great. As of right now, she's still in her training, but things have been going well. We have one officer that's still out on light duty as well, and another officer who returned from light duty after being attacked by a dog last month. So he is back to full duty. I reported at the last meeting that we had two vehicles that were damaged in car accidents, both of them were the other driver's faults, and those cars have now been repaired and put back in the service, so that is, that's our vehicle update. Our phase five of our speeding grant is now in, in operation, so you'll be seeing more cars out there on the road for speed enforcement. The budget is a work in progress, so I'm still waiting on some final numbers, and also to have a meeting with the, the city, obviously, to go over our budget proposal. And the police accreditation, we are still in our tier one accreditation process, and we're moving forward, we've really been kind of on a hyperdrive with that over the last couple of weeks. So, and then about, Attorney Marini mentioned about the arrests this afternoon in regards to the arson fire. All of the suspects in that case are juveniles, so there's limited information that we can release, but they have all been now processed, and they'll have court dates at the juvenile court. So if you have any questions, I will gladly take them.
Any questions for the chief tonight from the Aldermen? You are also getting off easy. We're going to move on to the guy who's having the time of his life, apparently, before, as the, as we're leading up to it, Dr. Debaco, Superintendent of Schools.
Yeah.
Dad of the year.
Thank you very much, President Stewart, yes, I have a helper with me, I'm on daddy duty, as you could tell. So my five-year-old will help me do my little report to the Aldermen, but I do want to report some very happy things. First, I would like to first give a big congratulations to our cheerleaders, and thank you to Mayor Cassetti for helping celebrate our cheerleader back-to-back state champions, which is a wonderful, wonderful accomplishment for our girls. I, I do want to share that I'm working with Griffin Hospital on a grant. It's a grant to support healthy foods, healthy eating in Ansonia, which it, if the grant goes through, it's called the Produce Prescription Program, all families would get a $40 voucher a card or like kind of debit card, and they get an additional $5 for every person in the household, which, once again, Griffin has just been a wonderful partner with us, so we don't know if the grant's going to go through, but once again, we're working on that. I did go to the Legislative Office Building with David Morgan from Team, once again, to talk about the kindergarten start age. I don't know if there's going to be much changes on that, but we have our plans in place, but we definitely, we definitely set our piece. I'm very, very happy, once again, we had our local CAPS Scholar Dinner where we highlight middle school and high school students from across the valley. I, I did see Beth Lynch on, on the, on the call here tonight, and it was wonderful, I had a, I have a fifth-generation Lynch graduating from Ansonia High School this year, and also one of the award winners. Not many people could say, as a superintendent, I have five generations going through my, through my building, so and it was just a wonderful award ceremony at Grass Hill Country Club. I do want to share, this Board of Ed meeting on June 8th, we're going to solidify that as our graduation date, June 8th, nine o'clock at Nolan Field. And the last thing I want to share is that we're up 70 students and we're moving kids in every day. We're doing a, our best job to mitigate some of the costs of our higher need students. I, I don't want to come to this board for anything extra, but I can tell you somehow the floodgates are open, I see Bobby nodding in affirmation, I, the, the high need students are coming and the, the costs are exponential, and I just wanted to just put that on everyone's radar, that we're doing our best to mitigate it, but it is something that's is getting harder and harder to control, and I just wanted to just share that with the Alders, just because it's, we're, we're doing our best. It is just, it's, it's difficult, and it's getting more and more difficult. But a lot of positives moving forward, we're very happy as the school year is coming to. We have testing that should be coming up, high school students just finished SATs, they're going to be doing NGSS, and then our younger kids are going to be doing their smarter balance assessments. And at this time, if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them, and if I don't have the answers, I'm sure my little Regina could answer the questions for you. She probably knows more than I do.
Love it, Joe, love it.
Debaco, I don't want to say this, but she was yawning during your speech, so.
Yeah.
Quite normal, very normal.
So cute, oh my gosh.
Any questions for the superintendent from the Aldermen? I do want to follow up on Alderman King's comment at the beginning, do you think that's something that would be of interest?
I, I bet you our younger kids would love it, I actually asked, it's so funny, the reason why this little person's in here, she's like, Daddy, I, because I would have done, I would have started you off, so I'm, I'm sure we could have got. We, we could probably get some of our younger kids.
Can we name? Only because I, you know, the girls are coming.
Nate, can you silence your phone?
April 8th, right?
Nate, Nate, we can hear everything you're saying.
John, can you mute him?
Don, mute Nate.
Maybe we just go quiet for a couple minutes?
Yeah. He's not muted yet.
Mute him.
Who needs to be muted? Who is that?
Nate, Nate Hardy.
Nathaniel Hardy.
Oh, hold on, I hit, Bob, I accidentally, hold on. All right, he's muted.
Oh, don't think, Bob, he, he might want to talk.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I know.
All right, so Joe, you were saying?
I would say the reason why this little person ran in here, she said she would have started the Pledge of Allegiance if they asked. And so I do think if my little one said that, I'm sure we would have other kids in district that would probably love to do it. So I, I'm sure that's something we could arrange with, especially, I think it would be great coming from our younger kids, it would really ground us. I, I think, it's like, I, I like having, you know, students on our Board of Ed, it kind of makes you understand the work that you're doing. It kind of, you know, I, I do come, you know, see what doctor, with, what Alderman King is saying, is that it would help out starting us in the right direction, so it's something that we could arrange, I'm sure our elementary principals would be very helpful in that.
Not only that, they would sound a lot better than we do.
Yes, I'm sure.
We're all on the same.
Any, any questions for Dr. Joe tonight? All right, thank you, thank you guys all again for coming, that'll close public official session, and we'll move on to financial reports, Finance Committee? Hit it, Mamon.
Let them make a motion to pay all bills if deemed correct, Josh.
Second.
Motion by Mamon, second by Rivers to pay all bills if deemed correct, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Second is to accept the February Municipal Report and vote recommendations.
Motion to accept, Josh.
Second.
Motion to accept by Mamon, second by Tar, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously, and then, thirdly, the request for refunds, which is in the amount of
Motion to accept, as noted.
Second.
Motion by Mamon, second by Yaman, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion carries unanimously. Lastly, I wanted to again acknowledge all the other monthly reports that, that are in your packet, and the work that goes into those, we do look at those, we do enjoy. A motion, just a blanket motion to accept all the rest of the monthly reports.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Adamowski and second by Mamon, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. Accidents and claims, there's one claim, number 03241051, Chafin Luhana LLP versus City of Ansonia Housing Authority.
Motion to refer to council.
Second.
Motion to refer to council by Yaman, second by Tar, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries again. Communications, we had one communication from Jeffrey Capola, Ansonia.
I am sorry, but I need to be excused. I have a family emergency.
Okay, Joe, thank you and good luck.
Take care, Joe. All right, yeah, Joe.
Take care, Joe.
We have a communication from Jeffrey Capola, Ansonia Recreation Director, the letters in your packet requesting $1,500 for, to be used for the years in Sonja recreational basketball, to be, to pay the referees, timekeepers.
I make a motion of that.
To approve that?
Yes.
My second.
Motion by Rivers, who was the second, or Yaman?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Moment of pointed discussion, do we have funds in the line to, to fund that?
We do, as of last time, we had.
About seven, wasn't it?
I wanted to say eight, but maybe it was.
Seven, right, yeah, seven or eight is what I.
Yeah, seven or eight is what I remember.
You have money.
Okay, thanks, Josh.
So we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Happy B-ballin'. We have no resignations. We have two resolutions. The first one is from me. This was the very brief resolution to increase the snow duty rate for our volunteer firefighters. And as noted in the resolution, it's currently under minimum wage. It's like fifteen. And the recommendation was to go to twenty-five, which is online in line with the Fire Watch Duty Payment as well. And I cleared that finance department as well before I put that in.
Second.
Motion by Rivers to accept and second by Yaman. Any discussion on that? All right, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. All right, motion carries unanimously. Thanks. Ain't that easy? Second resolution is a follow-up to last week. This is Resolution Initiation of Charter Revision Process. Dear God, please don't make me read this.
I'll just make the motion to approve it.
All right, cool. Thanks.
Can we just can we just bring up one thing before we?
Well, let's if we get a All right, motion from Yaman, second by Adamowski. Yeah, discussion. Go ahead, Bobby.
Yeah, I just want to put it on the record that what we did at our last meeting, which has come under scrutiny, apparently, I just want to put on the record that we did not have to go in this direction. I think it's a good idea to go in this direction. But based on the state statute that we all saw, we don't have to go in this discussion. So what was presented a month ago was a little off base, but we were acting in the best interest of the city and we were not neglectful in our duties in any way, shape or form. And I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that? Okay, let's vote. All in favor of approving solution? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. So the ball is in the mayor's court.
Josh, it's Beth. Can I just say? If there was anything that was going to be presented this year for on the ballot for November, the deadline is September twentieth for questions to be approved. So that's your timeframe. Yeah, September twentieth is the deadline.
Thank you. Perfect. All right, let me see what we got next. Now we have appointments. There's a couple of appointments. Board of, let's see, I mean, make sure I got these right. Yeah, one, two appointments, one each, one for Board of Assessment Appeals to your term. Florence Camilleri, Democrat of one sixty-three O'Neills Court. Term to expire eleven thirty twenty twenty-six. Motion to approve by Yaman, second by Rivers. All in favor? Abstaining. All right, motion carries. Congrats. Thank you. And the second recommended appointment is to the Advisory Recreation Commission. Ryan Santos of Ten Arlene Drive. Is the candidate?
Can I just make ask a simple question, just a question before? Is there a political affiliation need to be known? Is there any requirements on the Advisory Commission that are set forth?
I don't I don't believe so, because it was this was, remember, this is just that advisory committee put together.
Then I like the motion to approve. That's fine.
Motion to approve by Yaman.
A second.
Second by Rivers. All in favor? Oppose. Abstentions. Motion carries unanimously. Nothing under ordinance this month. Nothing under new business.
I have one.
Oh, you do? Okay, go ahead.
So I wanted to bring this to the board and actually ask, I don't know how we would go about it, but just like all other towns have where there's some big recognition of what their town is known for, since we're going into the sports complex being built. I was wondering how we would go about getting a big sign that says like right before you cross over where the Copper City entryway is to the walkway, maybe something that says, welcome to Ansonia, home of the X amount of year football champions. I think we're marketing ourselves as a, we're going to be starting to market ourselves as a sports city. And that's what we're known for. And now with the big sports complex coming in, it would be nice to have some kind of recognition sign as we come into Ansonia itself, because we don't have anything on that stretch coming off Persing, and that would be a great location, because then the next thing you would see is this big sports complex.
If we're going to get a big sign, Bobby, my only suggestion, if we're going to say that, let's point it at Derby.
I'm sorry.
So we can let them know how many times we've won.
I like. I don't care where we put it. I know Sheila can probably get us some kind of funding for something like that, so that it doesn't cost the taxpayers anything. But I think it would be nice to have some kind of permanent sign versus just a banner that hung hangs on a fence that we no longer will be owning. Absolutely. Yep. Where we're going to be able to put anything. We don't have that fence anymore, right?
And I think Yaman was offering to put it on a car and drive it around as a mobile sign as well.
We're we are actually still waiting on our our welcome to the Fifth Ward signs also.
Welcome to the
Those are on order, Chicago.
Thank you, Sheila.
Back order.
For a
Way back, right, Sheila?
Yeah, way back.
We're waiting for a welcome to the North End side.
Also backward.
Yeah, I just think it would be nice to have something recognizing the town as, you know, and and putting out who we are, since that's the reputation of Ansonia. And now we're going in that sports direction. It's a draw to our town, our city. Agreed.
Just make sure it's not permanent, so that when those numbers keep going up, we can replace them, Sheila.
Daniel scoreboard that could be adjusted. That's a good idea. All right, I'm sure that'll grab some legs, Bobby. Anything else? New business? All right, we'll move on to old business. So we have listed United Illuminating Company easement for approval. So this came up last month. And of course, we had the special meeting where UI gave the proposal. Explaining their plan and giving you an opportunity to ask questions. So we're now in the, I think, in the position to approve that hopefully, or if you have further questions or comments or what's your plan?
Second.
Motion to easement by Rivers, second by any discussion?
Discussion, yeah, I just want to ask, Chicago, can you amend to include John's caveat that they'll adjust their schedule to our social calendar over at Nolan? Okay.
Trish, you get that? Perfect. All right, motion in a second with the caveat inserted. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. So that will that easement is approved. I was thinking it's not on the agenda, but other other under old business. Last month, we had the solar farm settlement discussion. And what Alderman Lovinsky, you want to take it from here?
Oh, yeah, based on going out to each site. I'd like to add three addresses to the settlement. Close the settlement and authorize the city to finalize. The three addresses are twenty-two White Oak Road, twelve Shore Tell Drive. That's based on the view from their property. They have a view right into that solar farm. And also Five Hunters Lane, which is having a lot of problem runoff from the property flooding out their yard.
I second it.
All right, motion by Lovinsky, second by Rivers. Any further discussion?
Just make, Trish, do you have the addresses? Just make sure she has them for the
I have the addresses, but I don't have the full motion. He he moved to add three addresses to the settlement. Close the, close the what? Say it again, please.
Sure, I'll make that a little more concise. The motion is to add three addresses to the solar property settlement list.
Okay.
Twenty-two White Oak Road, twelve Shore Tell Drive, Five Hunters Lane. And to close the settlement and authorize the city to finalize.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. So we have a motion and we have a second. Who was the second on that? All right, all in favor? Oppose. Abstentions. All right, motion carries. Good good work, Tony. Thanks for your due diligence on that.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Yeah. I think we talked about adding in that state statute for the budget.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So essentially just adding to our vote from last month?
Yes.
All right, so do I have the, I'm trying to see.
Josh, this was the issue we discussed in in caucus where we had to have the correct language.
Yeah.
Statute. In order to utilize that to override the charter for a, you know, quote, legal budget process, given the later timelines that are various with the charter.
All right. Attorney Marini, is this necessary to do or should we do that?
It's permissible to do. I would not say that it's necessary to do. Again, the Board of Alderman has its own power to waive timelines. However, the statute actually gives you the ability to more than just temporarily waive the timelines to permanently change the timelines. That's something you could use the statute to do, or you could simply explore the discussion of that in charter revision. If you'd like to have a more broader discussion of that same topic.
Press was just to state it publicly that we were invoking that state statute, which we didn't actually.
You could you could you could certainly dovetail to that, you know, put that into the context of what you did last time, but you know, I do want to stress that what you did last time was sufficient to temporarily waive the deadlines.
Okay.
Just a question, John, doesn't this have to be done annually under that statute? Until until there is a charter change?
If you're if you're going to use it in that fashion, you could do it annually. But again, you know, for what you're going to do right now. You could either go the charter revision route, or you could, you you, you know, you you could make it known now that you want to invoke that statute.
I'd like to see it invoked now for the current budget cycle.
You can do that.
Okay, so I was on a motion. You, Steve?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So I think I think Tony Mammon's motion the last time is sufficient, except for the fact that it needs to reference this statute. Is it one twenty-one?
One ninety-one, seven dash one ninety-one B.
Thank you. Okay, so it needs to reference that this action is taken in pursuant to when what's it, Bobby?
Connecticut General Statute seven dash one ninety-one B.
Okay, so that 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 is just a sentence that has to be added on to the previous motion.
So that motion was made, it was approved, it was voted, it was actually closed from the last period and it's in the minute, so I think we need a new motion on it.
Do we need a new motion if we're going to go to charter revision anyway?
Well, for this current year, I think you do, if 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 we're, I think we're fine as it is, but if if the if the board chooses to reference, you know, that actual
to add to our existing motion of last month that this board is acting under Connecticut General Statute seven dash one ninety-one B, which expressly permits a municipality to amend the budget deadline as long as there's a two-thirds vote of the legislative body.
Bobby, can you add it as a new motion? Because I'm going to choose not to modify my motion last month.
So you want me to make it as a whole new motion? Okay, so motion. Make the motion to proceed under Connecticut General Statute seven dash one ninety-one B, which expressly permits the municipality to amend the budget deadline with a two-thirds vote of the legislative body in regard to this year's budgetary timelines.
Well, I think it's, I think what you're doing is approving the budgetary, the budget timeline recommended by the Budget Director.
Because you had, exactly, you have a proposed timeline, so you're just invoking that statute.
In order to amend the timeline.
Yep.
Correct.
Have a motion. Do we have, we had a second or no?
Second, yeah, I second it.
Second by
Just a point of discussion is that I understand why we're doing this. I just want to make clear that my personal opinion is that what we did last month was sufficient under the state statute. It doesn't need to be specifically invoked. I understand we're doing it for purposes of clarity. But I, you know, stand behind that vote and Tony's motion last time that I think what we did was proper under the state.
Yeah, what you you have all the ability at your, you know, at your disposal to waive the deadlines. This creates actually a stronger power, which is to actually amend the And you can certainly, I know, signal to this if there was any concern, right, about the state's recognition of that power. And they created a power far greater than just the ability to waive a deadline, to extend a deadline. They created a power statutorily for you to actually skip charter revision and amend your charter.
Correct.
Well, again, you could signal towards this, which sort of shows beyond a doubt. You know, that you had the ability to simply waive a deadline. And again, this is almost, you know, much to do about nothing. Of course, a municipality acting through its legislative body has the ability to alter timelines. You are the legislative body. You are the the sole municipal authority, the highest municipal authority. And as long as your action doesn't conflict with the state statute or federal law, then it's in your court to decide what to do. So your waiver last time was, you know, normal course of business for municipalities all throughout Connecticut. But, you know, invoking this statute definitely shows that even the state recognizes that these deadlines don't really work anymore. And it's recognized that if you wanted to actually amend your charter flat out and and change those deadlines without charter revision, you could. However, again, we're going to explore this in charter revision, so we can have a more robust dialogue. And the public can be involved as well. So I think it's a matter of, you know, belt and suspend and suspenders. You know, you're being extra careful, you know, sending a message to everyone that, of course, the city has the ability to do this. And, you know, both at the municipal level and also at the state level, it's recognized that it's within your jurisdiction to do this.
All right. All right, no further questions. Let's let's go. We have a motion. We have a second. As you said, much to do about nothing, but all in favor? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. Let's never talk about that again. All right, that I believe ends our regular session. And we have one item for executive session lease for High Axiom RE Purpose to Lease Property SHW thirty-five North Main. We have a motion to move executive session.
Motion to move to executive session.
Second.
Rivers, second by Mammon. All in favor? All right, welcome back. So in executive session, we had one item. Lease for High Axiom RE Purpose to Lease Property SHW thirty-five North Main Street. What's the pleasure, board?
I'm going to make a motion to reject the lease agreement presented by High Axiom. Second.
Motion by Yaman and second by Rivers. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously to reject and leaves us one item.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Mammon. All in favor?